All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fireline of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces, in our first responders, in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. All right. Our first item on the agenda this morning is citizens' participation of the many members of the public. Mr. Dunham, please step up to the microphone.
And I do know to pull the microphone close enough so I can be heard, which is one of my wishes for all the Select Board for the next year, to make sure we can hear you from the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham.
Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. Tonight, I just wanted to come before the Board and say something publicly that I've said privately to an individual, but I think the person that I told this to deserves to have this said in open session so the people can know. Mr. Lefon, I want to thank you for all you've done, especially these last six months. I'm going to be honest, when we first hired you, back when I was still on the Board, and you were the best qualified of the three, I had my little reservations how it was going to go a second time around, and you've already exceeded what my concerns were. And your performance the last six months have been remarkable. Your professionalism, your dedication to this town, under very trying situations and circumstances, mainly as a result of the actions of this Board, and you didn't let that dissuade you. You put up with a lot, and I, for one, just wanted to thank you as a member, as a voting member of this town of Carver and a resident, for the work you've done, especially these last six months in trying to get ready for this transition, trying to get all the finances and things that I'm afraid are going to be maybe falling through the down a little bit as we try to go into a new interim town manager. I just want to wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas and a happy and much less stressful New Year. And it's my hope at the end of this meeting that each member of this Board will go ahead and thank Mr. Lefon for what he's put up with, especially the last six months, and maybe, if you have a little self-reflection, a little bit of an apology of what he's had to put up with. So again, Mr. Lefon, I thank you very much, and I do wish you very much a very good and prosperous 2022. Now, there are a few other things that I would like to say, addressing the Board directly, but I'm going to keep it in the spirit of the season. I don't want to be the Grinch, so all I'll say is, please use the microphone, and I wish every one of you a Merry Christmas. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you, Mr. Dunham.
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate it.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the Board? All right. Seeing none, we will move along to our next agenda item, which is an update on the North Carver Route 44 Development Project.
Are we reporting Ellen?
No. Sorry, going to be one of those nights, perhaps. One of the more pleasant things we get to do on the Select Board is to recognize people who go above and beyond for the town, and one of those people is here with us tonight, Ellen Blanchard, who stepped up when the town really had an issue. We were without an assessor, we needed some help, and Ellen just went over and above in her service to the town. So Ellen, thank you for everything you do and have done for the town. And I will open it up for comments from the Board.
We have a poll.
We do.
Okay.
He's waiting. He's biting his tongue.
Oh, okay. Alan, speaking for myself, and I'm sure for the rest of the Board, we really do appreciate you. I know you did it on your own time, and for nothing other than that you care about the town, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Two words, thank you. I don't feel like it kind of encompasses everything that I and the Board and the town should say to you. I don't know how to say it better, so I hope you understand the magnitude of a real, true thank you. It's not empty words that just get said all the time. Thank you.
Yep. I'd like to thank you very much as well. I know a lot of time and effort was put into that. Everybody appreciates that, so thank you very much.
And if I could, you know, obviously, the luxury of having a professional assessor on the Board of Assessors at this point of transition was, I'm not sure other towns have been in a situation like this. So obviously, having worked with Ellen for years, and it has been very nice seeing you around Town Hall, I have to say.
It's been nice seeing you.
Why, thank you. So considering what it takes to go through the process and set a tax rate, it's a lot. And without, really without Ellen, we would have had to probably go on through and try to find a consultant who wasn't familiar with the town. It'd probably be consulting, being told what to do by other people, so I think we've, by the way, Ellen didn't charge us anything either, so, and don't expect to be paid anything. So anyway, I want to thank her. I have a pretty decent idea as to what, you know, she has to go through and what value she's been, so thank you very much, Ellen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Hi, Ellen, we have a certificate of recognition for you. If the Board would like to join me?
This is six.
Hello, Chief.
Right over.
Over here, I guess.
A little bit of a bit.
Very sentimental.
That's right.
You're running around.
Don't fight.
They will.
Thank you very much. That's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're sure that it doesn't, then it gets you a free bacon.
All right. Ellen, again, thank you for everything you've done. One thing I should mention before we go any farther, one of our members, Mr. Belvin, is on his way back from his vacation. He was, he had a couple of flights, or at least one that was delayed, so he was hoping to be here by 6 o'clock. He's obviously not here, but he may get here at any time, so we hope he makes it. Next up on our agenda now is the update on the North Carver Route 44 Development Project. I think we have two people here from the RDA tonight, Sharon Clark and Savory Moore, as well as Fire Chief Weston. So, in whatever, I think the folks from the RDA would like to go first, and...
If somebody would like to, I'm happy to move if somebody would like to...
Chief, if you would like to join at the same time?
Okay.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Clark. I'm chairman of the Redevelopment Authority. This is Savory Moore. He's my vice chair. Not with us tonight, but certainly people who have been working diligently on this project for months and months and months are Joanna Layton, Pat Maher, and Paul Costas. We'd like to give you a quick update on what's going on with the North Carver project. Most of you know it's the 300-acre site in the northwest corner of Carver, behind, basically behind Abashon Hardware. It's the old Whitworth property, the old Sumner Mead property. The history of it goes back to, what was it, landfills and...
Concrete plant.
Concrete plant. Stump dump. It's bounded on the north by Plumpton, it's bounded on the west by the Middleborough landfill, on the south by Route 44, and on the east by Montello Street. In the first part of the year, a national company named Hillwood out of Texas, which is a Perot company, which they're pretty sure to tell us very often, became interested in obtaining the property for their development. It has a lot of hoops to jump through, and the RDA has been working virtually tirelessly on this. Two and three meetings a month on our regular full Board meetings, and then many, many, many meetings. One of the things I would like to bring up with Mr. Lefon is, early in the summer, he formed what was called the Working Group Meeting, and that brought many people who were involved in it, from Planning Board, the Select Board, the RDA, the chief. We've had finance in there, we've had assessors in there, and they met every other week, which has proven invaluable for communication and keeping the lines open. Yesterday, the Redevelopment Authority put in a warrant article for some zoning changes that need to be done on that parcel. The RDA investigated all of these. These are all perfectly reasonable for the Green Business Park. The Green Business Park was established in 2010 by the town. It was an area designated for industrial development and as a means of commercial development and a revenue stream for the town of Carver. And these zoning bylaw amendments, which will be taken up at Town Meeting, were designed to bring what we hope will be a state-of-the-art development or facility. They are talking about a warehouse distribution center of some sort. All the plans are not finalized. They will be soon, I hope, and our big key is to make sure that everybody who knows, needs to know about this, especially all the voters at Town Meeting and every voter in town, will understand exactly what is going on in that area. We're trying to be as completely transparent as we can, or actually, we are being as completely transparent as possible on all of this. There's been a lot of moving parts. It will mean, it can mean some real improvements to the town, especially in the North Carver Water District, which will benefit the entire town. There's been some other developments that will come that way. Most people are familiar with or have seen the improvement over on Montello Street that's happening now. That was part of a MassWorks grant that was not formed by the RDA. It was a grant, 3.2 million, given to the town to improve that area and improve that There's just so much going on in that area right now that I want to keep it honed down to just kind of an update. And then what we'd like to hear after Savory speaks is any particular concerns that the Select Board might have, that we should be more mindful of, that we bring up as we go through the process to get this to Town Meeting floor. Savory's been working on what will be our public relations and website, which will have the real factual information as we have it, as we know it, and as we get it. And I'd like him to express, to talk about that a little bit. And add anything that I messed up or...
Well, just to, just expand a little bit on what you said, the zoning bylaw change encompasses about three or four different, actually, it's like six or seven different things. The major zoning change that they're looking for is an increase in height from the current 40 feet to a height of 65 feet. And as Sharon said, that's in order to accommodate the state-of-the-art internal racking systems that are used in distribution centers now for palletized cargo. That seems to be the trend nationwide, and it's the best use of the land and would therefore bring the best tenants and increase the most money to the town from a larger facility. The tenant is not known. The tenant will depend on the building that is built, and the building that is built depends on the vote at Town Meeting. So what we need to do is make sure that people understand what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. This is not a vote on a project going there. The Green Business District has about 15 uses that can be done by right, right now in our zoning bylaws. Among them are big box stores, up to 80,000 square feet. For a point of reference, Shaw's is 42,000 square feet, so almost double the size of Shaw's. And the state has dictated or given permission for up to 1.8 million square feet of space to be used in that 300-acre parcel. So if you take by right, what could happen, and probably wouldn't, but what could happen is that the developer, whoever it is, can build up to 80,000 square feet without a special permit, and they could build 22 of them to reach the 1.8 million square feet that the state allows. So that's, you know, that's some of the things that can happen there. So what we need to do is we need to make sure that all the information on the zoning changes at this point get out to the general public. And the way we're going to do that is to, we're preparing right now a website that is specific to the RDA. It will be linked through the Town Website, but it will be managed by the RDA. The main crux of that website will be a question and answer section, where we've got a list of questions right now that we have answers to that we're going to post. There's also going to be the ability for residents to post questions that they have, which will be answered on the website. So it's going to be an open forum type situation through the website. And that will be, that will be up and running on January 10th is our proposed date. And we'd like to have, you know, as many, many people pay attention to that and ask as many questions as they can, because we want people to have as much information on this project as soon as they can. We would love to have everybody know as much as they need to know when they walk in the doors of Town Meeting, as opposed to having the Town Meeting become an informational session. So that's, that's the plan as it stands right now. We have, the RDA has hired a consultant to work with us to go with our outreach to the public, and that consultant is former Town Planner Stephen Cole. And it's actually not Stephen. Personally, it's the Plymouth Regional Economic Development Foundation, of which he is the director. So it's his foundation that we've contracted with to help us through this phase with the consultant fee paid for by the developer. So this is not coming out of Town Funds to do that. But we are the total liaison with Stephen. He's not, you know, working with them at all. He's our consultant, the RDA's consultant. So I think that basically is what I have to say about where we're going here. I think that the important thing is that the townspeople know that the vote at Town Hall is, it is not yes or no for something being there. It is yes to the zoning changes that will allow the best possible thing to be there. There's going to be something there anyway, because zoning allows it. So the question now is, what can we do to make sure that Carver gets the best thing there that helps the town as much as it possibly can, what's best for Carver throughout this project? So that's basically it. And do you want to say anything now, Chief, or you want to wait for the question? Go ahead. All right. But Chief is, obviously, the chief has been on safety and fire, so.
So I did prepare a few statements, why, just to try to bring you up to speed where we are. As Mr. Moore and Mrs. Clark said, Hillwood is looking to construct a 1.8 million square foot facility, split into two buildings in the North Carver Green District. Carver Fire Department was first made aware of this proposed project in September of 2020 through a meeting with the property owner and their consultants. From then until now, the Fire Department has been working with the Redevelopment Authority, the Town Administrator, the Chair, the Vice Chair of the Select Board, department heads, in identifying all positive and negative aspects of this development. Under my purview, I've been focused on the fire hazards associated with the facility and the size, due to the size and height of the project. To get a grasp of the size of the facility, the roof area and each floor below the roof area is 27 acres in size, and that's building number one, and up to 65 feet in height. That's the size of the Carver High School, the parking areas, and the athletic fields, all under a roof. Just understand the magnitude of what we're talking about. As Sharon and Savory said, the developer will be presenting zoning articles at the upcoming Town Meeting to ensure that facilities are state-of-the-art, provide the most efficient use of space possible, while attracting the highest end-users for the site. This is obviously the best business approach to take, and certainly, that's something I don't disagree with. One of the zoning articles is to increase the allowable building height in the Green Business District from 40 feet to 65 feet. This increased building height, combined with a massive one building of 1.2 million square feet, and a second building of 600,000 square feet, and an extremely limited municipal water system for fire protection in that area, has the potential to create severe fire safety issues for fire responders. However, these are solvable issues, and we are working hard, making every effort to resolve them. Since March of 2021, we have been working nonstop with the developer, Hillwood, on solutions to satisfy our fire protection issues. As your Fire Chief, I have currently hired a professional fire protection engineer from Jensen Hughes. Jensen Hughes is a well-known and nationally-recognized fire protection engineering firm. This protection engineer and staff are being paid for via a professional consultant fund that the developer, Hillwood, contributes funds into at no cost to the town. However, these funds are used, these funds used are totally controlled by the town and by the Fire Department strictly for consulting services. I have also consulted over 20 very respected local and nationally-known Fire Chiefs, multiple retired Fire Chiefs, deputy Fire Chiefs, our own CFP Fire Officers, and even the State Fire Marshal. Everyone has provided critical insight to help us develop proactive fire protection systems, outlining the needed and outlining needed fire apparatus, along with search and rescue and fire suppression equipment needed to ensure the safety of everyone associated with these large facilities. This is equipment that Carver Fire Department currently does not have. With that said, I also want to reassure our residents that the Carver Fire Department is extremely well-trained and equipped to handle emergencies within the current facilities that we have. This is a different type of project, and obviously, a larger handle. My first goal since I've met with the RDA is to identify all the hazards in the area of fire safety that this large-scale facility could bring to our community. With potential hazards and concerns identified, we have been working nonstop with our fire protection engineers and consultants from Hillwood to ensure state-of-the-art fire protection systems will be incorporated into the building designs. We have made calculations on the amount of water for fire flows that will be for the facility. However, discussions on those water flows are still ongoing. At a minimum, there will be 1 million gallons of plus water onsite for fire protection. If permits are granted, access to an onsite pond for additional fire protection waters will be available. These quantities are still very much in discussion with Hillwood. Also, through our investigations and consultants, we have identified fire apparatus, fire equipment, and training limitations that need to be addressed and acquired for our department, specifically with this mega development through the developer. Our next step has been to develop a fire mitigation agreement. You'll hear a lot about this in the future, with Hillwood. This agreement would provide the Fire Department with the needed fire apparatus, fire rescue and suppression equipment, and proper training to mitigate potential fire incidents at the facility. Development mitigation agreements like this are legal, and they're not unusual when dealing with large projects, especially when they come to a community that does not have proper equipment or the capabilities for very large-scale commercial fire operations. To date, we are actively working through the terms of the Fire Department mitigation agreement with Hillwood. This agreement, when completed, will legally outline Hillwood's responsibilities in the area of public fire safety. Once this mitigation, once the mitigation items have been clarified and tentatively agreed to, this will have to be vetted by town's legal counsel. We realize that. And most likely, it will have to be approved by the Select Board prior to Town Meeting. Once finalized and adopted, all the items in the agreement would be paid for by Hillwood with no cost to our residents. Further mitigation agreement, all fire apparatus and equipment provided by Hillwood would be in service at CFD Fire Stations 24/7, and will be utilized for emergency responses throughout our entire community. The items that are tentatively looked at in the mitigation agreement, so you're aware, is establishing a minimum amount of fire protection and water available onsite that has to be stated in the agreement. Backup fire protection systems, backup fire protection water systems, state-of-the-art fire protection sprinkler and notification system, pump sizes and quantities, and aerial apparatus purchase to reach building heights above 32 feet, an additional 1,500 gallon per minute fire pumper, future improvements to our North Carver Fire Station, purchase of specialized search and rescue and fire suppression equipment, updated SCBA bottles with higher quantities of air drawn by firefighters, fire training funds, excuse me, facility training funds for all police, fire, and EMS, among a lot of other items. This will all be funded by the developer to ensure safety of all operating in and around the proposed buildings. It is our goal to have all fire safety concerns addressed, documented, mitigated prior to the annual Town Meeting, voters voting on the zoning articles. That is our goal, and I feel that's achievable. At that time, I would be prepared to either advise Carver's Town Meeting voters that the public safety concerns of the Fire Department have been properly addressed by the developer, or they have not. It's pretty much that simple. To date, Hillwood Company has been very professional, professional, and reasonable to our requests. Hillwood is a very reputable development company specializing in large-scale distribution facilities. We have developed a good working relationship with them, working hard to put together a draft mitigation agreement that will ensure a safe business operation. I want to spend a moment just to commend the efforts of the Carver RDA Committee. This Board has been working extremely hard to ensure the best interests of those living in our community, and that everyone in Carver is represented, everything is investigated, and all conditions are met. This is a volunteer Board working on a project of a scale like no other. From the very beginning, a working group has been assembled by Mr. Lefon, which included various department heads in the RDA, and we have worked seamlessly together. All the information among the different groups dealing with Hillwood have been very transparent. In my opinion, everyone has the same goal. That is the development, that if this development is meant to be in Carver, then we are all committed to making it right for Carver. I believe we have all done that thus far. In conclusion, I have stated from day one to the developer, the town officials, and my own firefighters, that I am in no way here to... in our community, and that everyone in Carver is represented, everything is investigated, and all conditions are met. This is a volunteer board working on a project of a scale like no other. From the very beginning, a working group has been assembled by Mr. LaFond, which included various department heads in the RDA, and we have worked seamlessly together. All the information among the different groups dealing with Hillwood have been very transparent. In my opinion, everyone has the same goal. That is the development, that if this development is meant to be in Carver, then we are all committed to making it right for Carver. I believe we have all done that thus far. In conclusion, I have stated from day one to the developer, the town officials, and my own firefighters, that I am in no way here to be an obstructionist to this project, even though I have been called that many times by some, as I honestly feel this project, if done right, can provide a huge and needed economic boost to our community. However, I will never put any monetary value or potential mitigation compensation agreement above the safety of our residents, the people that work in these facilities, and certainly not above my officers, firefighters, and the public safety workers that work in our community. My objective is to try with all my abilities to investigate, identify, and make an honest effort to work with the powers-to-be to ensure that any facility that is built in the North Carver Green District Park is safe. Nothing more. With that said, I do believe we are headed in a very positive direction, as Hillwood has been very responsive to all of our concerns.
Thank you. Just before I turn it over to questions from the board, I just want to publicly acknowledge, as the chief did all the time, that the folks from the RDA as well as the Fire Department have put in to this. I can, I can tell you from taking part in those working group meetings that just extraordinary amount of time and extraordinary amount of effort. So just on behalf of the town, thank you for all your, all your efforts in this. We only have one chance to get it right, so let's get it right. And with that, I'll open it up to questions from the board. Who would like to tap us yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to echo Mr. Townsend's sentiment, having been at most of those meetings myself. A lot of, a lot of work, a lot of good faith, and I appreciate that. And you said that we would have a chance to ask a question. My only question is, or I guess it's more of a statement, I'll be happy with it if the Fire Department is happy with it. That's, that's my main point. My, my second is more of a concern about truck traffic. And I, I know I keep bringing this up in the meetings. They have been told by MIPA that they have to keep their truck traffic on Route 44. And given the size of our police department, which is not very good, and the size of our town, which is almost 40 square miles, I really want to know the answer to that question. How is that going to be enforced? Because if they are told they can only use 44 East and West and not Route 58, that's going to take a bit of enforcement. I don't know if you have the answer now, but I think it's something that has to be really, that they have to understand is a serious concern.
Could I just perhaps suggest that somebody explain what MIPA is? I don't think people watching understand what MIPA is and how helpful and important that is in terms of the permitting and the quality of this project.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, which you have a project of this size with that much land disturbance, it has to go, it's a state agency that these applicants have to get approval from. And that was one of that agency's requirements, that they keep traffic off of Route 58.
In answer to your question, and of course, the answer is right now, we don't know. But our thought process is that after the, you know, probably in the first of the year, certainly before town meeting, we'll be bringing in Chief Doofly and have him analyze whether, you know, we need, whether the town should have, you know, officers posted down on Savory Road to catch some of the traffic. Or there's got to be, maybe we have to talk about some kind of penalty for drivers who bring their trucks down there. And, and I think truthfully, the only reason they would go down Route 58 South would be to catch on to 495.
They can get 495 from 44.
They can get 495 from 44, and actually it'd be easier. But that has been talked about. I think short of the chief and fire and safety, the single biggest issue that we've encountered has been traffic, and we are ever mindful of it. I kind of sit and envision what's going to happen, but it is an ideal location. If everything works perfectly, they can go 44 East, 44 West, right from that spot. And the improvements that the MassWorks grant is doing has, has an eye on that, too. So thank you for your thought, and we're working on it.
Because I think, thank you, Mrs. Clark. I just want people to understand, this is, this will be a 24/7 operation. And right now, Carver's a rural town that goes to sleep and gets dark at night. And so, you know, this could be a problem.
I just want to add that in, in today's world, most, most trucks have GPS positioning so they can be tracked of where they go. And the zoning bylaw that is going to come in front of town meeting in April is the first of many meetings that have to happen in order to make this, this facility a reality. There are technical review committees, there's site review plans, and each one of those subsequent meetings has attached to them an order of conditions in order to be approved. And that is where this MIPA study can be reinforced, that these, these trucks have to use east-west on 44 as opposed to 58. So I would think that the order of conditions put forth by the various boards in this camp, in this town, as this project moves more and more towards finalization, would address that and put the onus of responsibility onto the developer and onto the tenant to make sure that their drivers follow the rules. And it could be something, as Sharon said, it could be a fine system where they, they monitor it and, and they could either be fined themselves as the company, or they could in turn put the owner, put, fine the, the drivers themselves. So it's, it's something that is at the forefront of our thought process because we know that, you know, Carver, Carver's an old town with, with homes very, very close to Route 58, 10, 15, 25 feet away. And, and as a 24-hour facility, we know that trucks are going to be going in and out of that facility in North Carver. Our, our, one of our major goals in this project is to make sure that those trucks don't come anywhere south on 58, that they go east-west. So there, there are methods to, to be aware of what's happening and to enforce what the rules are.
Not to beat this to death, but the trucks may have GPS, but does our police department come in their vehicles? And I don't know to, I, I'm not expecting you to answer, but that's my point. I mean, they may be capable, but we may need some help.
Well, yeah, it, yes, possibly, but I would think that, you know, that, that the trucks would, the truckers keep logs, and they would have to, you know, their GPS would track where they went. So where their route could be, could be found out.
If I could just interrupt for a moment. Mr. Belvin, as a forehand, inform me that he has landed that Logan Airport and is available by phone with the board's permission. I'd like to tie him into this meeting by speakerphone so he can hear what's going on. Any, any objections? All right. So just to reach out for a moment. Traffic, time is developing. Bob? Bob, I'm, I'm going to put you on speakerphone so you can participate in the meeting, okay? We're, we're in the middle of, right now, we're in the, the North Carver Route 44 Development update. We have the, the chief here as well as Savory Moore and Sharon Clark, okay? I'm going to put you on speakerphone. All right. Bob, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Ms. Hewitt, did you have any other?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I have anyone else?
I guess, can I piggyback on Sarah? Traffic is a major concern, and to, to jump on the truck thing, too, you know, fines are great and all, but I saw a story on the news within the last month about the tens of millions of dollars that are owed to the state because of EZ Pass violations. And the, the biggest offenders are the large companies who have racked up tens of thousands of dollars in fines. So I don't think fines on 58 are really going to deter it. And I know as a voter at town meeting, it would give me a lot more confidence to know the plan of, of how truck infractions are going to be dealt with as opposed to we'll deal with it later on down the road. Because we've had other projects in town that had truck restrictions, and when those restrictions are broken, they're, they're spoken to and they change for a little bit, but then they go back to their ways. And then on top of that, when we had our visit there on top of the truck traffic, how many employee spaces were there? Like well over 500 employee spaces. So, and those people aren't restricted to Route 44. They're coming from everywhere. So we have to take all of that traffic into account, too. So traffic on both ends is a major concern. And then Chief, question for you. That fire mitigation agreement that you talked about, is all of that stuff being developed assuming that the 65-foot zoning change will happen?
So we had developed, we had developed, it's a good question. We had developing that mitigation agreement regardless of what is built there, as long as it is built by Hillwood.
Okay.
So it's really all I can disclose right now, but I will tell you, we definitely have in discussions that that agreement would be in effect regardless of 65 feet or 40 feet.
Okay, so it's not dependent on the zoning change?
And the goal is to make sure that fire safety is represented regardless of how town meeting decides to vote on the project. And that's why it's so critical to have this mitigation, mitigation agreement completed prior to town meeting. Or that's not good.
Okay. And then I guess my last statement, too. I've, I've said it in various board meetings that I've been on, and I think I even said it at the last town meeting in reference to another bylaw. I just, personally, I don't like when zoning changes are proposed for a specific project. Because then it's, it's kind of like spot zoning wasn't allowed. We brought that up on the planning board or something. To me, it just seems like spot zoning, and it just kind of irks me when things are changed for someone, because then when you say it's best for the town, well, it's kind of best for the developer. So my walls are always kind of up there. So the more transparent, the more information you can get, I know you said that, but there's got to be more, because I also heard from looks that there was a bid put in on the site and an end user recently, too. So I think, I think more might be happening. So just saying we'll deal with it later doesn't always end up in what's best for the town, so.
Well, to, to answer your last concern first, spot zoning is when a particular parcel in a district is changed for the benefit of a certain company. This zoning change is for the entire district. It's for the entire Green Business District. The fact that it is owned by currently one developer at this point is happenstance. There's, it, it could be split if, if Hillwood decides not to go through with this. These properties could be split, but they're still part of the Green Business Park, and this zoning bylaw would still be in effect for that business district alone. So it's not spot zoning. We're not, we're, we're making the, we're proposing the zoning change for the district, not for a particular company or a particular project.
But because of the developer, because you said people won't know what's going in until they know the height of the building. And state-of-the-art going to 65, that may be great, but that's a whole lot more stuff that can be stored in there, which would result in more trucks. So I don't, I just personally don't know that going to 65 is, is thinking of the town first and not the development first, because right now it is just Hillwood. So I have my concerns and...
Your, your concerns are well-founded, but there's the other side of, of the coin, perhaps, that the, the increase in height, giving the developer the clear height of 40 feet inside the building, could result in a more automated system of retrieving goods, which in turn would reduce the need for employees, which would in turn reduce the traffic. So there, as Sharon said earlier, there are a lot of moving parts here, and there are a lot of things to think about in, in, in developing this. Where the zoning is important is because that will narrow down not only the people who might be interested in becoming the tenant there, but it will also eliminate some who can't do what they want to do at the shorter height. And those tend to be the higher-priced, the, the, the Walmarts, the Targets, the Wayfairs. They're the ones who are now looking for the increased heights. It's the smaller, like Bob's Discount would be looking for a 40-foot, you know? So you're talking about a different level of, of quality of tenant, and you're most likely talking about a different length of the lease on the property, where the high-quality, the high-quality tenant would want a longer-term lease, which would in turn bring more revenue to the town over a longer period of time, because there would be less likelihood of them leaving and leaving at this huge empty warehouse. So again, there are a lot of moving parts here, and a lot of things are, are dependent upon the zoning bylaws. And, and chief among them is who's going to be there.
Right.
And, you know, it's, it's a catch-22. It truly is. And I understand that. You know, we'd all love to know the answers to your questions, but the, whoever goes there is going to determine those answers, and whoever goes there isn't going to be known until after the bylaw change. So it's tough. I, I get that. So.
I just had a couple of questions. So just to, my own mind, so if the 65-foot height doesn't get approved, and we have to go stick with the 40, Millwood would still try to find a tenant for that, correct? Because I know in the beginning it was 65 or nothing, there was a, it probably wasn't accurate, but that was the talk. I mean, in, in your opinion, from what you've heard, and again, obviously, it's not.
There's no guarantee of that.
Okay.
Right now, the, the company that developed the property to make it usable for something like the distribution center is a, is a company called Route 44 Development. They're the ones who've had, they've taken the property, the Whitworth property, they've purchased all of the adjoining properties that they needed to, to get to this 300-acre site. They've, they've mitigated a lot of the environmental damage that had been done in its previous uses. They've brought in clean truckloads and truckloads of earth to level the, level the area where these buildings are going to go. They've spent millions and millions of dollars, Group 44 has, getting this property ready for the next developer, the, the person who comes in and builds a building. So, I mean, Hillwood is looking for a 65-foot height because that's going to bring in a better tenant, and it's going to be a, a building that is worth more, and therefore will bring better returns to the town of Carver in the form of tax revenue. Whether Hillwood decides that they can find someone that would be okay with 40 feet, we're not 100% sure. They haven't said yes, and they haven't said no. If for some chance they say no, then Group 44 is going to go out and look for other developers who will come in here and do it at 40 feet. And, you know, as I said earlier, this is not going to remain the way it is now. Something is going to be there. We have the opportunity now to make sure that what goes there is what's best for the town of Carver and brings the best return on the use of that property for all of the, all the residents of Carver. Just very briefly, I, I looked at the zoning bylaws, the, there are about eight or nine things that can go there without a special permit from the planning board. They're, they're available by right, which means that the developer can just put them in. And agriculture is one, childcare facilities, municipal buildings, office buildings, take and put in office buildings. Banking, retail stores up to 80,000 square feet, as I mentioned earlier. Hospital, hotels, hotels can go in there by right. They don't need a special permit. They just say this is what we're going to do. Print shops and essential services are some of the things that are available to any developer right now by right, based on our current zoning bylaws. And that's with the 40 feet, but, you know, still 40 feet is a, is a four-story hotel. So, you know, that it, we have the, we have the chance here to make the choice of what goes there. And the developer's looking for the increased height to, to bring in the better, better tenant and, and the, the better, the better financial return for the town of Carver. Some of the other options that are available with the special permit are a major commercial project, which is what this is, which is why this will require a special permit from the planning board. Restaurants, retail sales. Restaurants, retail sales of over 80,000 square feet, which are, you know, twice the size of Shaw's or bigger. And planned neighborhood developments. They're, you know, they could conceivably request a special permit to, to build housing there, which, you know, I don't know who would want to live on a former landfill, but, you know, it's been cleaned up. It's fine. It's, it's no longer a brownfield. So, you know, those, those are the things that can go there. Whether Hillwood stays in, in the fight, I mean, they've invested a lot of money, they've invested a lot of time with the chief, with us, but the, the developer of the land so far, Group 44, has invested millions in getting that property to a place where it's ready for the next step. And that, Group 44, they're going to be looking for the most money they can get for what they've done. So, you know, Hillwood may, may reduce their offer on that property if they don't have the 65 feet, because it's not as worthwhile to them, and in which case, there may be other, other developers who come in and, and try to, you know, outbid. As of right now, Hillwood has not said yes or no whether they're going to continue. I, my gut feeling is they probably would because of all the work they've put in, but it's not, it's not a guarantee.
Right, okay. And one other quick question, too, as far as, I know, I'm sure everyone thinks the same thing about the traffic, any traffic lights on the plan to, off of 48, I'm sorry, off of 44 to get onto 58?
The...
I might be too early in the plans, but is that...
The, the long-term part of the MEPA study is that, that there will be lights at, at both intersections, at both sides, you know, the eastbound and westbound intersections of 44 and 58, where the, where right now, there's already traffic coming, you know, coming into town at rush hour, coming off 44 West onto 58. You're stopped at the stop sign forever.
Right.
The plan is after the facility is, is, is approved and underway, the building of it, that they will come back and, and revamp that intersection. The MEPA study is available right now, if you'd like to look at it, on the RDA website, oh, RDA page of the Carver website. It's M-E-P-A, MEPA study, and, and it's a huge document, but in there, there are traffic studies, and there are proposals for that intersection, which show what, what they expect it to look like when this thing is, is up and running. But yes, that is part of what's being addressed. Montello Street, the Montello Street cutout that's being done now is the first step in removing traffic from the Albershan Dunkin' Donuts-Noria Gas Station intersection and moving that further north. So, but yes, that, that intersection is, has been addressed in the MEPA study, and those are the plans that you can look at moving forward.
Thanks. I just want to thank the RDA, the working group, Mr. Lafon, the fire department for, it's a huge project, and when we walked at that time, it was just amazing how much land and what's, what that really entails. So, I know it's a lot of hard work, and we all appreciate it. Like I said, the bottom line is what's best for the town and...
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Belvin, do you have anything for the fire chief or the RDA?
No.
Any questions?
One second, I gotta switch off. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, my main concern is that number one, public safety is taken care of, meaning that they have everything for equipment and for their safety. That's number one. Number two is the height, whether it's going to be 40, 50, 65, I don't have a problem with it, to be totally honest. This project's been going on a long time, and hopefully, it'll move forward and be tax-positive for our town. But we need to make sure that there's protections in our town. Except the public safety feature, the tax revenue comes back to the town, but also, we have to look at the environment of what's in there and make sure that we don't get somebody in there that's going to contaminate the soil again. So, we really have to look at all those options beforehand, and then the 65-foot, my only question is, does that include the area where Dunkin' Donuts and the former Tikikai 44 Brewery, does that include in the 65-foot, too?
No. No. I don't know the, an answer to your question, I don't know the exact outline of the green business district. It would only include the green business district, which I don't believe the Silo Marketplace is part of. I don't have that information in front of me right now. I don't have an exact map.
Did you hear that, Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I did, and that's important to the extent to say, the 65-foot in that back area where it's going to be industrial development, hopefully, for it, which is great, but when you start bringing it out to the rural character of our town, do you want a 65-foot building there? Or do we want to keep it a smaller-scale businesses or whatnot? So, the development in that area, anything you can see from the roadway, which is like you would solo, would have said, is that if it's outside, where you don't really see it, I don't have a problem, but when you start bringing it right up to the main street, then I kind of get an issue for it. So, that's my concerns. Biggest one is public safety. I want to make sure they have everything they need to protect themselves, all right, and to protect our community.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Thanks.
All right, and just speaking for myself, I have been involved in the working group, so we've discussed some of these things, but I just want to, a couple of comments, and then, Chief, I have a question for you, but I think the main thing to let people know, I have had people discuss this with me, is it's important to let people know that something is going to be there. It's not this or, or nothing. Something is going to go into this, this spot. So, I think it's incumbent upon us to get the best project we can for the, for the town. And I will tell you that the number-one question I get from people when they talk to me about it is truck traffic. Everyone is concerned about truck, truck traffic. They're concerned they're not going to be able to get down Route 58, a number of things. So, that, that is something that we have to address with, with, I think, the police chief as soon as possible, because that, that is something that everyone is concerned about.
Including us.
Yeah, well, and I'm aware of that, and, but it's important to know that that is something, that's a concern that the public has. And Chief, if I could just ask you, I think recently, may have been last weekend, but I'm not sure exactly on the date, but there was a fire down in North Carolina at a QVC facility, and I wonder if you're familiar with that at all, and if you could contrast that with what's going on in the proposed development in North Carver, and how that could, could possibly affect it?
Sure, so, so in our world, yeah, that is big news, and we paid a lot of attention to it. There was a fire this Saturday in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, for the facility of roughly the same size as this projected at 1.2 million square feet. That building was built in 2000, it is a fully sprinkled built-in, building, considered fairly modern, obviously 20 years old. So, so it does raise concerns, but although there was a fatality there, and multiple fire agencies, I think the 45 agencies responded on that call, and they're still working that incident right now. But, but that isn't, in my opinion, that isn't meant to scare people. What, what is meant to come out of that is that's why it's so important, and why we have been so proactive since we first found out about this project and what could go there, was not to run away from it, was to be proactive and to develop a fire mitigation agreement. And although it's still in draft form, and, and obviously, we worked with consultants and fire protection engineers, it's so important that that be adopted and analyzed prior to town meeting, so that we take all lessons learned, and we've done that with numerous fires that we've studied, and we make sure that we have the right systems in place. And, and I'm confident, I'm very confident that we're heading in that direction, you know, and it's easy to be skeptical, skeptical, and, but again, I mean, I just want to stress, that's how important it is to have this agreement in place prior to any town meeting. And making sure, regardless what happens when dealing with Hillwood, you know, we have public safety in place, and, you know, we can make a positive recommendation on the project, and let the voters decide on, on what they want to see. But again, that's really about all I can say right now, I guess I was going to say.
Mr. Lafon, is there anything you'd like to add?
I would just, two-minute feel-good moment, I think the members of the RDA have already been praised, but I think, not just praising, but I think people need to know that at least the majority of the RDA, they run on the boards and committees in town. So, number one, thank goodness we have everybody doing what they're doing for the town, but I think the other point is that, considering the realm of experience and current experience that the, the members of the RDA have, I think there is a very strong integration, you know, overall. It's not as if the RDA is over here and the town is over here. So, I think that's important for people to know, and I think to the extent that people are working in concert, I think is, is important, so there aren't any issues, concerns, mitigations that need to be had, that the RDA isn't, you know, very, very much in tune with, with our other, not just the fire department, but other town boards and committees. So, so not just for your RDA service, but understanding how incredibly strained your time already is, I think it's worthwhile for people to appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Is there anything else you folks would like us to be aware of?
Thank you. The, the plan with the RDA right now, going forward, after the first of the year, is to really meet with all the boards on more informal sessions, make sure that we're with the planning board. We haven't had much conversation with the North Carver Water District, and they will play a very important role in this, and continue to meet with the chief, who, who works very well all by himself, which I'm grateful for, and continue to meet with the select board, give you updates as we move, move forth. The launch of our website is, is going to be very good. It'll be very informative for the town. We are waiting on a financial, or the economic impact analysis that will give us some, some sense of what, what it will mean to the town, because there's, there's all kinds of numbers, large and small, but we don't have this nailed down to anything right now. And that's an important piece of the puzzle, too. The town has to know that in order to put up with this, they're going to get this. And this is, this may very well be the, the single biggest non-residential revenue stream that the town is going to have. You could put 500 houses there, but we know what a strain that is on town services. So, so we need to look at this in that vein as well. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and please let us know if you need to come back, if you'd like to be on an agenda, just whenever you need.
Yes, just one, one other thing I want to add is that probably in late February or early March, the planning board will be holding public hearings on all of their zoning bylaw proposals, and this will be one of them. So, there will be a public hearing on this, on these zoning changes sometime prior to town meeting. So, keep your eyes open for that. I just, historically, they've, they've been towards the end of February, early March, about a month prior to town meeting. So, this, this project will come in front of a public hearing.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, the next item on our agenda is Chapter 61A, 16 Indian Street, Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 20, Page 333, Lots 4, 5, 6, and 7. Is there anyone here to speak to that? Anyone? All right, so seeing no one, I think we do have a number of people here that are concerned with the next agenda item. Anybody have any objection if we skip over the 61A for now and address the 640 item? No objections, okay. So, we will go to a discussion and possible vote on finalizing the Town Administrator Screening Committee, including consideration of a representative selected by the Finance Committee. And I know this is a hot item, I would just ask any comments that are made, let's keep it to the agenda item, and we will move forward. Mr. Jermaine, would you like to address the board on this item?
Okay.
Okay, discussion, Ms. Bogart.
I would like to make a motion that we extend an appointment to Kevin Tracy for the Screening Committee. He applied twice, he showed repetitive interest. He is not only a resident, but a local business owner. I think he would be valuable, so contingent upon his acceptance, I make a motion that we appoint him.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Belvin has seconded. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, the item on discussion here is to include consideration of a representative selected by the Finance Committee?
Well, the item, on the, on the agenda item is to finalize the Town Administrator Screening Committee, including consideration of a representative selected by the Finance Committee. But we do have a motion and a second, and I think we should discuss that motion. Ms. Bogart?
Listen, I talked to you about how I felt about this. It feels sketchy. I don't see why we would, I don't see why we would not appoint Mr. Tracy based on what happened at our last meeting, on the vote that happened, and how the Finance Committee said they weren't going to take it up again. So, I think we should reach out to him.
So, in, in, so we're open here, we did talk about that, and what I said at the last meeting, and what I said when we discussed it, was that I did say at the last meeting, because we didn't have a full board, but I thought it was appropriate that we bring it up before the full board. So, that's what we're, that's what we're doing. I, I don't think it's sketchy, I think it's appropriate. We, this board asked the Finance Committee to send us a representative, they sent us a representative. At the last meeting, we didn't have a full board, so I said we would bring it up before the full board. So, here we are. So, with that being said, is there any other discussion on Ms. Bogart's vote?
Not on that particular motion, but on the topic in general.
Okay, well, Ms. Hewens, then Mr. Belvin.
Okay, so I think it's extremely important that, I think Mr. Tracy is extremely well-qualified. It's not an issue of that at all, but I do think it's extremely important that we have a member of the Finance Committee on the Screening Committee, given that the Finance Committee is the committee, and the Finance Chair in particular, is the person and the committee that works most closely with our Town Administrator. I also feel that we, as a board, we don't have any business telling the Finance Committee who they should choose as their representative, I think I said this last time, and they've chosen their representative. So, you know, this isn't, this is not a popularity contest here, in my opinion, it's a question of who did the Finance Committee appoint.
Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, like I said at the last meeting, I feel Mr. Jermaine is not the best option for the Finance Committee. They don't have all the information that we members have, and even what Mr. Jermaine has about this. So, I can't, I can't see him as a representative for the town going forward with the Screening Committee. That's just my opinion.
Okay, all right. Any, any other discussion? Any other talk here? Mr. Hoppman, anything?
Not in this motion, no.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. All right, the motion fails, two to three. Are there any other motions?
I don't even think we need to make a, a motion to appoint Mr. Jermaine. I think the Finance Committee has already sent him to us as a member of the committee, but if you feel it's important for me to make that motion, that's my motion.
Based on our 11-2 meeting, I think we need a, we need a motion.
I move we appoint Al Jermaine, Chair of the Finance Committee, to be the Finance Committee Representative to the Screening Committee.
Is there a second? I will second that for discussion. Discussion.
All right, I guess I'll keep it short. In my opinion, based on the professionalism that I've seen at public meetings, and I don't know the best words to say this, but based on the stuff we've talked about in executive session, I kind of can't believe you guys can look me in the eye and think it's appropriate for, to, for him to be the best choice to represent the town in hiring a new Town Administrator.
I actually don't know that that's appropriate.
I don't think it's appropriate, Ms. Bogart.
Okay, okay, then I'm sorry.
Here's, here's the only thing I'm going to say. I spoke quite a bit about this at the last meeting, and I think, Mr. Hoppman, you were the only person that wasn't here, so perhaps you didn't hear it, but if we wanted to appoint someone else, this... you didn't hear it, but if we wanted to appoint someone else, Mr. Tracy, who I think is eminently qualified, by the way, or anyone else, we could have done that at our 11-2 meeting, when we made up the screening committee. But we didn't do that. We asked the Finance Committee for a representative. They sent us a representative. They had a special meeting to hold to select their representative, they voted unanimously for Mr. Jermaine with, I think, one abstention. And I just think it's inappropriate for us not to, not to appoint the person they selected. So that's, that's all I'm going to say on this, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to be, it's just, that's, that's how I feel. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this?
I would like to say a few words. First of all, I apologize for not being at the last meeting and having everybody wait another two weeks. But first, I wanted to clear up a few, a couple of the comments from the December 7th Select Board meeting. It was stated, I believe by Mr. Jermaine, that if the Finance Committee's choice wasn't approved by the Select Board, then the Finance Committee wouldn't be represented. I just want to point out that Mr. Mahar and Mr. Cole are on the Search Committee now, and they're both members of the Finance Committee. And granted, they aren't the representative voted by the Finance Committee, but the Finance Committee will be represented. I just wanted to clear that fact up, because I've heard that a few times, that they wouldn't be represented. But again, I realize it's not who the FinCon voted on. Also, Mr. Jermaine, not to pick on you, but stated at the Select Board meeting that the charge of the Town Administrator Search Committee was to have a representative of the Planning Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee to be chosen by their respective committees, and the Select Board didn't have the choice for these appointments. That was correct, but that was for the first search committee, and that was voted on May 18th by the Select Board. On November 2nd, the Select Board discussed and voted on whether to vote on the Planning Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee's recommendations. So it did change a little bit from the first to the second committee. The vote was 4 to nothing in favor, Mr. Belvin didn't attend that, so it was unanimous. So again, the Select Board has to approve their representatives according to the vote that we had. So I just wanted to make that clear, because I know there was confusion with some of the So regarding the Finance Committee's Town Administrator Search appointment, I've given this a lot of thought and spoke to a lot of people on this topic. I'm taking this very seriously, I'm taking everybody's point of view in this. But I keep coming back to four things: agendas, making things personal, respect, and moving on. So if anybody just indulged me for a little bit, I've written down some things. As Mr. Jermaine brought up at the December 7th Select Board meeting, on December 1st, Mr. Belvin sent an email to the FinCon members regarding his comments to choose another Finance Committee, Town Administrator Search Committee candidate. Several of them replied to Mr. Belvin and took this as an opportunity to also criticize the performance of the Select Board. I took offense to some of these comments, and they showed a lack of respect to the Select Board and myself. I have no problem taking criticism, but when my character is being questioned, that's when I have a problem. There is no need for personal attacks, just because I didn't vote the way you wanted or for the person you wanted. I've explained the reasons why I voted, and if anyone has any questions, they can talk to me. I'm more than willing to discuss anything with anyone at any time. In fact, I've been accused of listening to too many people and having too many people in my ear. Just because I listen to people doesn't mean I agree with them. I want to make that perfectly clear. I will tell you that I don't appreciate people telling me why I voted a certain way or how I'm going to vote. I've seen and heard plenty of people saying, "I'm going to vote on this issue tonight." I think everyone can see that there is some tension and friction going on. It's time, it's time we need to all take a step back. We all need to do what's best for the town and not just say it or accuse others of not doing that. We need to work together and not against each other. Whether you agree or disagree with how, on how a board or committee votes, you need to respect the vote and move on. There have been several Select Board votes that I didn't agree with, but I accepted the will of the board and moved on. I didn't complain about it and try to get a revote, I didn't storm out of the meeting, I did what one is supposed to do. I accepted it and I moved on. So again, we need to stop the name-calling, finger-pointing, and trying to embarrass those who don't agree with us. Let's trust the people who are on those boards and committees and respect their decisions. And I say this starts right now. I'm going to respect the Finance Committee's choice, but let me make this perfectly clear, just because I'm respecting their choice doesn't mean I agree with it. I'm trusting that they have the best interest in the town and their decisions, and I'll respect this decision, just like I hope people will start to respect the decisions the Select Board makes, and stop the private agendas and personal attacks, and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Is there any other discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Do I, Mr. Belvin?
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion was to appoint Mr. Jermaine to the Town Administrator Screening Committee. Actually, Ms. Weston, can you read back the actual motion?
Motion to appoint Jermaine as the Finance Committee Representative to the Screening Committee, by Hewens, second by Townsend.
Do you hear that, Mr. Belvin?
No, I didn't hear that.
The motion is to appoint Mr. Jermaine as the Finance Committee Representative to the Town Administrator Screening Committee.
What I actually said was, the vote was, I move, I move that we appoint Alan Jermaine, the Chair of the Finance Committee, to be a member, the Finance Committee's representative on the Screening Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. And I seconded it.
I heard that part. Just one thing, is that I, my comments about Mr. Jermaine regarding his disappointment is clear, that information that I have...
Again, Mr. Belvin, let's not be personal here, the motion, this is about the Finance Committee's selection of a representative to the Screening Committee.
I just think if they knew what we know, they may have a second opinion.
I think that's out of order.
I think that's out of order as well, I'm sorry, Mr. Belvin. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right, the motion passes 3 to 2. Thank you. All right, we will go back now. Congratulations, Mr. Jermaine. So that finalizes the Screening Committee, correct, Ms. Weston? Do you have, you may not have this, do you have the members of the Screening Committee at your disposal, if we could read that off for the people at home, where the actual Screening Committee is?
I can get it for you.
Okay, could you get that, we'll read that off at a later, a later time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
Thank you very much, briefly. We're going to need to get some clarification with these accusations in executive sessions.
Mr. Jermaine, that's, that's out of order at this time. We are going to move along to the, what was the former 630 item, the Chapter 61A, 16 Indian Street, Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 20, page 333, lots 4, 5, 6, and 7. And again, there's no one here to speak for this this evening, correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I meant to do this in advance. I'm not sure, I would have to get my calculator, which is what I meant to have done, but I know that the zoning bylaws read that, these are four main lots, which means that approval not required by the Planning Board, so it's a pre-existing road, they can chop up the lots, and as long as they meet certain requirements, the Planning Board has to endorse the plan. The main requirement is that there be 70% upland. There can be 30% wetland, but there has to be 70% upland. If you take a look at Lot 5, there is about, let's see, I can't really see it very well, looks like 78,000 square feet of wetland, and 62,000 and change square feet of upland. Now, it is a 3.24 acre parcel, nevertheless, 78,000 and change square feet is not 30% of the parcel. I'm sorry, it just can't be. If you look at Lot 4, again, it's a 1.9 acre parcel, you have 40,000 and change square feet of wetland, 42,000 and change square feet of upland. I doubt seriously that that's 70% upland either.
She turned out the wetland.
I would have to, again, I don't know about Lot 3, that looks like it's possible. I don't know what we can do about this at this time, because obviously it's been signed by the Planning Board. Clearly, nobody looked at the percentage of upland.
Oh, this is the...
It's a problem. I'd love to know, we could have some time to figure this out legally.
Well, Mr. LaFawn, what are our time requirements here?
Well, I think, how many, I'm sorry, how many, is it 30 days after it's been presented, the town has the right to exercise its right of first refusal? If not, it's essentially a passive, passive approval.
These folks do have a closing scheduled on 12/31.
Well, I mean, I just, I couldn't believe this when I look at this, those lots don't conform to our zoning.
Well, can we make a motion that we decline, that, can we make a motion that somehow incorporates this required, these zoning bylaws?
Well, that's not...
Wouldn't really be our, that's not really our...
Right, that's not part of the...
That's up to the Planning Board.
Right, that's not within your authority tonight. However, they have to go through a permitting process, and it may very well be that they don't, they're not successful in getting what they, what they're seeking.
That's correct.
I mean, from what Sarah is saying, there, that's not going to happen.
The problem is, they've already, this plan has already been endorsed by the Planning Board, which means that the Planning Board is saying that it needs zoning. It can't possibly need zoning with that percentage of wetland. It's just, I mean, you don't need a calculator for the first one.
No, you don't, but that's really not our, that's really not, not in our purview here.
I suggest maybe Sarah, in the next couple of business days, maybe we can speak to Mr. Mackey and our zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
Just to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Okay, thank you, that's a good suggestion.
Yes.
I would do that.
Yes.
So is there a motion?
I make a motion that we not exercise our right of first refusal, unfortunately, even though Indian Street is one of our senior properties.
Certainly is. Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Belvin, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Sarah, that really, look at this, some more of these properties, just to, just to make sure everything's clear about zoning and what's actually going to be done. I'd like to have the developer in Indiana talk about what they plan on doing.
But again, that's the Planning Board that would approve the zoning, not the Select Board.
Yeah, Bob, we can't really, we can't really, there's nothing legal we can do about it, but what I am going, what I plan to do is to hopefully have a discussion with the Chair of the Planning Board and the Zoning Enforcement Officer, and just make sure that the lots ultimately conform to what they should.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Belvin.
The other thing is, is we should be looking at affordable housing, and if this is an area that could be utilized for affordable housing, then we look at that option.
All right, thank you, Mr. Belvin. Any other discussion?
So I just have a question, so what we're, basically, what we're voting on is the right to exercise our option to purchase the land.
That's correct.
Nothing else.
Nothing else. That's all that's in our purview when this kind of thing happens.
Right, so if we, if we want to look into purchasing the land for affordable housing or something else, we should vote no.
That's correct, but again, we would not need to identify the money to purchase the land.
Right. Okay, just want to make sure that we all know what we're voting on, so it's the option to purchase the land. Like you said, we're concerned to be able to say that.
So my concerns are essentially that they're saying they have...
You want to exercise your first right of refusal.
Right.
She said to not exercise.
Seven, seven lots?
Yeah. Sarah, can you correct your motion?
I beg your pardon?
Well, just, yeah, clarify your motion.
Yeah, can you correct the motion? You said to not exercise the first right of refusal.
That's right, so we decline...
So you want to exercise the first right of refusal.
No, I'm declining the first right of refusal. So that's, the double negative is not to exercise. I should have said decline.
Any other discussion?
So I, so I guess, just to be clear, so if we want to look into this, to see if there is a possibility to find funding for affordable housing or something else, we should not refuse our right to purchase.
Well, again, you're, Mr. LaFawn, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if either we decline our option to purchase the land, or we exercise our option to purchase the land.
And if you exercise it, you have to have the money.
You got to have money.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
It's not a helpful statute. I mean, it's not really practical in most cases to be able to exercise your, you know, to purchase the property. But we don't, it's a statute, it's not a bylaw, it's not, so we're working within the framework, which may not be fair, but it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, if this had come to us in a discussion with the board six months ago, for example, and we had maybe, you know, had discussions with CPC and figured out a way that we might be able to do this, and then they can give it to us, and we have 30 days.
Exactly.
Then we could do something about it, maybe.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Belvin?
Just one of the reasons why we, we've discussed this and other options for 61A, that should it be coming to us first, instead of going to all the other boards and committees? So it gives us time to look at the property and to assess if we're going to do this. I think this is an issue that we have, going back to the same thing, that the selecting of last people to find out, and then really puts us in...
Yeah, we have, we have discussed that, and we have mentioned that we'd like that changed.
Sure, but I don't know that you can change that. I mean, if somebody, you know, sends an application directly to the Select Board office tomorrow, it doesn't change the timeframe, you have to work with it, so...
There's only so much we can do.
Right, you still only have 30 days, whether or not they've been, you know, gone through other channels.
Doesn't change that.
No, so...
And once a developer submits a form A to the Planning Board, the clock starts ticking for the Planning Board.
So, and it's, it's not a, it's not very helpful, no question, the statute is not helpful.
So I just have a question, on the back sheet of the 61A land agreement that was signed, on the back it says, October 25th, that ADGA Realty sent a letter to the Town of Carver Board of Selectmen on this. Did I miss something before that, that, this is the first we're hearing about it, correct?
It's the first we received it. They just have it predated, that's when we received it.
Okay.
The date that it's stamped, the date that it's stamped in is the date we received it.
I'm sorry.
We can't help the date that they put on their letter.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
No, that's okay.
Received on the top, okay. That answers that question.
That date, that's just the record, is 12/8 that we received, so...
Okay, then.
And the form A was approved last July.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to decline the town's option to purchase the property?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Mr. Belvin, are you opposed?
No.
Mr. Belvin? I think we may have...
I'm here, sorry.
No problem, you're opposed, correct, Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I'm in.
Okay, thank you. So it passes 3 to 2.
This may be one of those points of conversation with a state rep or state senator, in terms of what's...
That's exactly what I was...
Yeah, because this, this really doesn't provide anywhere close to ample opportunity for any board, anywhere in the Commonwealth, to make an intelligent, timely decision.
It doesn't, and also, as I said, it's usually going to be a substantial sum of money that most towns don't have, just laying around, and...
I mean, it'd take you longer to schedule a special town meeting.
That's, that's exactly, that's exactly right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our town administrator update. Just a little more.
Yes, just, there's only one item here specifically that was requested, has to do with the Plymouth Street water line. I mean, as we, as of today, a health agent has met with various residents that have taken him up on his, his offer to meet, and there are 12 of the 20 properties that have committed to hooking up. In fact, the first one began today. And there are four homes on Hines Ave that have all committed, and they may be tied up as early as the end of the week. Kevin mentions that he, the people have really, really been very, I know, excited maybe a little bit, over the top, but very pleased and happy with the, what's going on right now. His... His hope is that there's, when people see the activity up there, there'll be a little bit more momentum from, you know, some of the other residents that haven't quite made a decision yet. Keep in mind that KP Law has drafted an agreement to hold harmless, for lack of a better word, for the town for those who choose not to specifically hook up. And it's my recollection, I think, that that would become part of their deed. One of the problems that Kevin has pointed out, though, is that it's, it's been hard to find a plumber or plumbing company that would actually be doing the work inside someone's home because these people are backed up so, so much here with their work schedules. So, so that's something he's working on as well as the company who is actually doing the extensions from, from the water line to, to the homes. So all in all, it's moving along fairly well. As I said, he's hoping to have four of them hooked up as, or at least brought from the, the street to the, the foundation as early as the end of this week. Well, things are moving.
Any questions from the board on that?
Sounds good.
The only other thing I would bring up, even though it's not on here, is I did get a, a nice phone call and a follow-up from a gentleman whose name I can't use because it's personal, but, and he was really singing the praises of our Assistant Veterans Agent. Lisa Erickson is, most people don't know Lisa, or even Mark, toiling away in the basement. And this gentleman couldn't sing her praises enough. He has, doesn't have family in state. He was, he had no housing. He was gonna, he had nowhere to live. So she, she found a particular location, facility, and it helped him get into more permanent housing, you know, nights, weekends, personal phone numbers, personal cell phones, so that he can contact her anytime that he needed to, really well beyond what people would think that a, an hourly town employee would be doing. So I just wanted to point out, you know, he went into more detail, but he basically said she saved his life. So I just think that it's nice, we, we generally only hear the bad stuff. So, so I just want to give her a little, little pat on the back and remind people that, that there's people- It really loses the mood when that- Anyway, I think it's good for people to know that, that this town officials, town employees who are, you know, toiling away in obscurity who are doing great work for the, for the residents of the town. So that, that was the only thing I wanted to add, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you, that's great to hear. And I just, tagging along with your Plymouth Street water line update, I just think we owe a great deal of thanks to Kevin for all the hard work he's done. I know he's, this has been going on a long time, and I've had multiple conversations with him, and he really has worked very, very hard to-
Right, and he's, and he's gone out of his way to meet individually with people, and, and that's, that's not always, that's not easy to do. It's not easy to do. It's not always a very, they're not necessarily happy up there for what has happened to their, to their water supply. So anyway, so I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman. Not to, I think I may have interrupted you, but I think-
No, no, that, that did, I just think we, we owe him, the town owes him a great deal of thanks.
And, Mr. Chair, I wanted to thank Ms. LaFawn for, for all you've done.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We do have one item. It is a application for one-day special liquor license by the Friends of the Carver Council on Aging. I'm a member of the Friends of the Carver Council on Aging, so I am going to recuse myself from this and let Ms. Hewens run this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a one-day application, special liquor license application from the Friends of Carver Council on Aging for a fundraiser beer and wine tasting at the Council on Aging. And the date will be Saturday, February 5th, 2022, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, and it is open to the public. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the one-day license, one-day liquor license.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Belvin?
Thank you. I kinda, I understand the point for this, but I think that town buildings are not the place for alcohol. And if this was off-site of a town property, I don't think I have a problem with it, but, yeah, I have a problem with it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And one extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. Let's see, our next meeting is going to move from January 4th to January 11th to help accommodate our new town administrator. Give him a little time to get his feet under him or a possible new town administrator, depending on how our executive session goes. So our next meeting will be on January 11th. One thing that left off this agenda was Select Board community announcements, but I did verify that because these are things we don't, we don't debate, they're just little announcements from the board, a thank you, that it's okay to include them in this agenda. So, Ms. Belvin?
Okay, well, I guess number one, Merry Christmas, everybody. And number two, I just want to say, you never lost your cool in any of our public meetings, and it didn't go unnoticed. So thank you for your professionalism in our meetings.
Thank you.
Mr. Belvin, welcome to our meeting.
Hello. Thank you very much. I haven't been around town that much the past couple of weeks. I want to thank the board for accommodating me from being away on vacation. I want to thank Area 58 for their help with this, the chairperson. Merry Christmas to everyone and their families, and that's really it. I just, thank you. It was good to get away.
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you. First, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. I also want to thank Mr. LaFawn for your time in town and good luck in the future. Appreciate it. And again, that's about it.
Ms. Hewens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want particularly to thank Mr. LaFawn for all he's done for us, the 18 and a half years you've served us. I want to make sure everyone understands that. And I know that I'm not alone in saying that we're going to miss you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And, Ms. LaFawn, I also want to thank you. I wasn't around, well, at least I wasn't around on the Select Board for the first, your first tenure here, the first 17 years, but I, I was here for the entire 18 months of your second. And I appreciate a lot of the things you've done, some of them that may have gone unnoticed. I think one thing that particularly strikes me is, is your guidance through the pandemic, especially the beginning of the pandemic. I think that's one of the reasons I voted to, to hire you in the first place was because we were heading into the pandemic, and I thought we needed someone with, with your experience. And I think if you look back at the way Carver Town Hall and the town handled itself during the pandemic, we did a really good job. When other town halls were closed, closed for long periods of time, we were open. And people could come in, they could get their building permits, they could get, they could visit the town clerk, they could do whatever they had to do. And I think that speaks to all the employees of Town Hall, but you're the town administrator, and you're the leader, and I think that speaks to your, your guidance. I, during your 18 months, I was, I've been Chair, and I've not been Chair, and I've been able to, to, to work with you in, in different capacities. And I, I appreciate everything you've done. So I, I want to thank you, and I know the town thanks you, and-
Well, I appreciate that. This is a great town, you all know it, and it's been a pleasure, and so thank all of you.
Thank you. And I also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Stay safe, enjoy your time with your family. And, and with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21-2, to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel, interim town administrator, and an executive session in accordance with Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21-2, to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Assistant Town Administrator, and to reconvene in open session. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All right, Ms. Bogart?
Jim Bogart, aye.
Mr. Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Thank you. We are in executive session. We are back in session. And I will just announce that earlier today, the Select Board came to a contract agreement, an interim town administrator contract agreement between the Town of Carver and Robert Fennessy, a six-month contract writing from January 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2022. And we will vote to ratify the contract. Ms. Bogart?
Jim Bogart, aye.
Robert Belvin says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Don't we need a motion?
I was going to say, don't we need a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the interim town administrator contract for Robert H. Fennessy Jr.
Should we ratify it? I'll second that.
Oh, Ms. Bogart?
Okay, Jim Bogart, aye.
Robert Belvin says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
It is unanimous. And one other thing, I did mention earlier in the meeting that I would announce the final members of the Town Administrator Screening Committee. Thank you, Ms. Weston, for getting that information for me. The final members are Walter Cole, the Business Representative, Mary Ross, Ellen Blanchard, and Pat Mahar as the Pat Large Members, Craig Weston and Tom Walsh, the Public Safety Chiefs, Jen Pratt from the School Committee, Bruce Mackey from the Planning Board, and Alan Jermaine from the Finance Committee. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, hearing up, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.